You want to get started?
The big kickoff.
Take a vote to open the hearing?
No, you just call the meeting to order at whatever members present.
Call the meeting to order, four members present at 6:32 PM. 6:37?
6:32, what are you talking about? Stop it.
I have a bad angle. First order of business is Anthony Stell and Jason Zimmer, Burge Pondover.
They don't do it.
We don't have the meeting minutes unless...
The agenda.
Agenda.
Yeah. Sorry.
Basically, the appointments, the bills.
Can we make a motion to accept the agenda?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as read.
I'll suck it up.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Alright.
I'll just give a brief intro because I'm not an engineer, so it'll be better to answer any of your questions. Probably, we're probably going back almost three years ago now due to some survey work by the butter to our Elm Street parking area. We ended up losing a good portion of the access road into the parking area. Parking area's down here. And a fence was put up which essentially blocked it off. And we've been working for a number of years now to try and come up with a design to... Originally, we were looking at putting parking up on the road. But if you've been out there, it's straight up, there'd be a huge amount of earth moving. So we essentially came up with a plan to just, with the land that we retain, restore the driveway. People are using it now, but we want to get it to a safer width and cut back on the slope to reduce the grade and reduce erosion, so...
Did something happen to the roadway?
A fence got, yeah, put down the property line so that you couldn't drive down it. And then this past year, one tree in particular, but we had a tree company out anyways. There was one big white pine that was all dead rot in the middle. But last thing I needed was for that to fall on the butter's fence or on his property. So we had a bunch of the trees taken out and immediately thereafter, people started driving in and using the parking lot again. So they are driving right along the side of the fence, but...
It's really tight.
It's one car, it's not two car passable. It was always really only one car passable except for a couple spots. But we want to make it safe and accessible again, so... Been talking to Charlie Seelig on this for years. Although we realize that we don't officially need any permits or anything from the town. We want to, as a courtesy, talk to Charlie to have, you guys have the opportunity to look at it and provide comment.
Jason said the precedent was happening now and because that fence was put up by the butter, apparently the original road that was there, part of it seemed to fall on his property. So when he did put the fence up, it sort of really cut into the amount of roadway width that we had available to us. So in looking at that, we decided to see if we could, you know, the grades out there on that existing embankment, the slope is pretty steep as it is, pretty high also. So given that, we, one thing we looked at, the possibility of cutting back the grade, flattening that slope, and still trying to get it 20 foot wide width to get two vehicles in and out of there safely. And it looks like cutting back a three to one slope, clearing some of the area, we were able to push the road, holding the fence line, coming off of that 20 feet, we're able to get two lanes, two 10-foot lanes in there and get access in and out into the parking lot to the wildlife management area and back.
So you'd need no retaining on that?
No, not in this scheme. Originally, with the original parking up here, we would have needed, you know, very high walls.
Yeah, no, that does jump right out.
It really does. So doing this, we're able to eliminate that by, you know, fairly brave. Three to one is a very workable slope, it's maintainable. And there'll be vegetation on it to stay...
So you're going to stabilize it with it?
Absolutely.
You guys being in the wildlife, I'm sure it's going to be local, it's going to be... Yeah, we'd contract out the work, but the actual, we'd specify all native seed mix for the slope and probably some, you know, smaller shrub plantings as well.
Okay, it's all stone, you're not paving it or anything?
The roadway's often be stone.
Yep.
Absolutely.
That's crushed blue stone?
It'll be, that's very crushed stone.
Okay.
And we'll also be doing that in the parking lot area too and just kind of revitalizing. A lot of potholes and dips in there now, just kind of level it off, grade it off a little bit.
The only question that has been brought up is whether or not you're going to have accessible spots. I assume this is all going to be fairly flat when it's done. Is it, you're not really doing spaces, right? Just kind of an open area where it fits?
Yeah, we, I mean, there's an existing dirt parking area. We won't want to fill in the potholes in there. But, you know, we're, if you go into the property, you run into, it's pretty soft sand, especially for the first stretch until you get to the bog roads. But, you know, we'd have absolutely no issue designating a spot. I mean, it probably only fits about 10 cars and I think, you know, you mentioned the regulation, we could designate a spot.
Yeah, one spot for 10 up to 25.
Yeah, that would be, just that way. As long as it's, you know, there's no sloping issues near that one spot. Just something safe, I think that would just satisfy everybody.
And we do make accommodations for it because every once in a while we get requests from handicapped or disabled individuals. And we've done vehicle access permits on this property and other properties where we'll actually give them a key to the gate so that, you know, folks who can't physically walk to some of the resources they want to get to.
Is there any sign out front to highlight the area a little bit better?
There's a sign out there now that we'll redo. It's just a wooden Burge Pond Life Management area sign. And then at the parking lot, we actually had a volunteer, probably going back five years ago, build a kiosk. But we lost the parking area almost immediately thereafter, so it was a kiosk to nothing. So we'll be replenishing that with new materials inside of it and signage and seasonal regulations and things like that. We have been monitoring, we don't have them up right now, but we have been monitoring the parking area with, we've got remote sensing cameras that are cellular based, so it's immediate upload of any pictures. And we've been providing that to the environmental police so that they can monitor it. And, you know, the people have been using it since it's been open. It's been 95% hikers and dog walkers and, you know, a few hunters here and there.
As far as any sort of drainage coming down the street, does it just shoot right? Get a run along the side here?
No, actually the drain, the road itself is a little bit higher, but there's a curb line and the driveway, the way to the curb cut is actually going to be, is going to come up a little bit. So the drainage on the road will stay on the road.
Should go down?
Yeah, the drainage in terms of the property, right now, it's actually sloping into the butter's property. The new scheme's going to have it, we're actually regrading everything to make that, the fence the height, a little ridge, so to speak. And let the drainage come back and kind of flow along the back, along the bottom of the slope into the back.
It's all sand. Yeah, it's all sandy material along the...
Is it going to be like a small culvert that you're going to put on?
No, it'll be just, the ground itself is actually going to carry it. It'll be, again, it'll be vegetated. If areas, you know, it's problematic, what we'll do is we'll come back and put a little bit of gravelstone just to... Yeah, just to save a little swale. But it won't be on the road.
Yeah, there is, there is a bit right now of an old, it must have been when the cranberry, the former cranberry bog folks built the road. There is a little bit of a swale on, at the toe of the slope that flows down. And then there's a trail that, a trail that comes up the hill. Maybe it's in here and it kind of dies out at that trail. And then there are some wet ones as you get further down.
Yeah, I just know at the edge of the road, if you're going to have a gravel road and your slope's going to come down, if it's all sandy too, you know. Does it make sense, maybe you give yourself a little bit of a buffer and actually help a little swell?
Well, if we can, we actually will, things are so tight now, we did it. What we can do is we'll, you know, we'll definitely put some sort of...
It's all natural and vegetated. How are the sightlines coming out here? Can you see pretty good up and down the street?
Well, the fences are better, but it make, we will probably have to do some clearing of the vegetation. Well, some's going to be clearing with the addition of the slope. It'll make the actual sightlines a lot clearer once that area is cleared out. But right now, it's a little difficult because there are trees and shrubs right along that curve.
Yeah, and the fence runs right up to, does it run right up to the right of way? So if you're driving up here, you've got to kind of nose out a little bit.
You do, you have to slow down to turn, to look to the right.
Yeah, I think the building inspector just wanted to make sure you put up, like, just one handicap sign.
Oh, yeah.
Somewhere, so that's kind of designated for them. That's really what he's looking for.
Okay. Yeah, I see no issues? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could we keep one copy of those? Just because it's a lot easier to read.
We don't have the meeting minutes from July 6th to approve, correct?
We do.
Okay.
I always put them on just in case it happens.
Who'd you give the bill to? Make a motion to approve a bill for Silver Engineering at the amount of $170 for the Jodis Rain Estates inspection report.
A second?
You can't second.
We can't second.
I was just waiting.
Good mail, sign it.
Hold on, Jason?
Aye. I'm terrible at this.
Yep.
There you go. Do we have any other correspondence to review? Is that all here?
Yes, Silver Engineering sent me a new report that I just got. It's not yet on my agenda.
Seems like that report takes care of itself except for the stumps.
Yeah.
So, because he already went to them about his concerns.
Yeah, so is this the second time that we've seen this letter or is it just twice?
That's the new letter.
So it's twice that he's mentioned?
Yes.
But we, we just got the letter out to them this week about the stumps.
Okay.
So he should have it by now.
Okay, any ongoing business as it relates to the review of the zoning ordinance? Fortunately, I wasn't here last week and I haven't had a chance to review the minutes.
We had a nice little conversation about it. It was good. Yeah. It was...
I was arguing with Mark not realizing that he was pretty much agreeing with what I was saying.
Well, what was the, what was the final, I guess, result of that discussion?
Well, we were just talking about how we have to clear up the multifamily thing about... I think the more that we've all looked at it, I think it probably makes sense to just adopt more of our regular subdivision control laws into the multifamily. It seems to make sense. But one of the issues that we were talking about was frontage and how much, right now, we don't actually have a requirement for the frontage for the road. So whether or not it needed to be 150 feet, which is our standard Form A frontage or lot frontage.
Yep.
Is that what we also want for the road?
Or you could just argue that you could request a variance from having each building be on a lot and then just have the frontage for the whole parcel be on the main road.
The problem is, is also conflicting that they can't get variances with multifamilies. That was brought up by Mr. Andrews when he was on here.
Is that a factor?
Subdivisions, there are also not 150-foot frontages on those either.
For the lots?
For the lot, but not, not the actual property where it meets.
Correct, there's no requirement on how big your property is to be to do a subdivision.
We require just around 110. Because 110 is like a preferred...
To create a new road, you need that much frontage.
Well, based on our width of road plus 30-foot radius. So that doesn't follow by multifamily rules.
Which, nothing has that actual...
Yeah, no.
As far as a private way went, we approved one that had 75 feet.
For a multifamily development?
For the, for the way in, they only had 75 feet of frontage.
But the way doesn't get defined as a public roadway, right? So it just becomes a driveway within a site that has 75 feet of frontage.
Yeah, they only have 75 feet of frontage. And the argument is that they don't have frontage on a roadway to build even, you know, to build their...
So right, so then I guess the argument would be, do they, does each building need to be on a separate lot? If you strike that aspect of it, then the lot could just be 10 acres with 150 feet of frontage?
I think the word lot, having anything to do with it implies subdivision control. And that it either needs to go away or we need to decide that multifamilies have to go into subdivision control, which the minute you put them ends of subdivision control, then they're a subdivision.
Then I don't think they should be.
What I've seen about that...
And that's, I agree with that.
The property around it should, around the multifamily dwelling, the building itself should be the same. That way, we know we're keeping it to the character of the town, which is part of the interest in the whole zoning bylaw anyway. So if we use the same set of rules for the multifamily, the only difference is there's two families living in the building.
It's not limited to just two families.
Or, yeah, multi, but we have the same requirement, same setbacks.
But you need to have a 10-acre lot to build a two-family? That seems a little out of whack.
Well...
You need a minimum of 10 acres to build a multifamily development.
Then if I were to continue reading, I would need each lot to be a minimum of 10 acres to build a multifamily development on each one of those lots that you've just created. It's a subdivision control.
Right.
Alright, I see where you're going with it. Yeah, then that lot has to be formed and then that lot has to be 10 and then, you, chasing your tail. Alright.
You have to have huge lots, yeah. Because then you're building 10 units on each one, you created a road to a site that goes nowhere, really. Now you've got to maintain it instead of it being the condominium association's responsibility or the apartment owners' responsibility. I, I hear more like a commercial development.
There were, there were set, it's not in here in front of me, but there's setback for those, for the buildings, right? Requirements from, is it from each other or is it from the lot?
From each other and from...
And from the lot, quote unquote.
Lot line, the back, the side.
Right, and I wonder if that's why the term lot was put in there? Because the setbacks required those lines for a lot?
A lot is stricter than a regular single family.
Right, well, I remember there was a ton of setbacks that they had to go through.
But what was the issue with the Halifax Trails, that was closer, right? How did they get around that? I don't know.
Yeah, front setback 75, rear yards 100, 100, 100.
Doesn't that follow that, can you, you can't get variances from zoning?
Well, the whole, the whole theory with special permits is so you can't...
It should get passed though, yep.
You know, when you can't make it the way the bylaw reads, you should be able to get variances and waivers. That's what special permits are really all about.
Where does it say that you cannot get a variance or a waiver from the zoning board of appeals?
It's somewhere in there. I don't know exactly.
The old big book, 167...
Special permits shall not be...
I've got to bring mine in. Mine's a gigantic book like that, with little pages like this.
Bring an iPad and just scroll through.
Deep word searches, you there? Control find.
Yeah, Ctrl F.
Yeah.
Ctrl F, show me what I want.
So we're looking at special permit process?
I won't lie, I'm diligent in my reading up on these things. But I do recall, I do recall that that was one of the sticking points brought up by Mr. Andrews when he came in.
I remember him bringing it up, but I don't remember any specific article being pointed to.
I can borrow Gordon's and figure out where he's got his fancy tabs on this book.
16721. Look at all the sign rights. Here, talks, talks right about variances.
I think it's the, within the special permit for the multifamily.
You think so? In that particular section?
No. Okay.
Yeah, the multifamily one's fairly benign on its own.
He was very adamant about it. Like I said, I didn't search and find exactly where he found it.
Okay, here it says, "Special permits to hear and decide an application for special permits." Such permits should be applicable only to the use of the property for the purpose specified. You shall not waive, vary, or relax any other provisions.
Oh, yeah, he found it.
What is it, 167?
It is 16721A2. A2, yeah.
So it says, blah, 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 "Such permits shall be applicable only to the use of the property for the purpose specified. You shall not waive, vary, or relax any other provision of the chapter applicable thereto." But then, it goes on to say... There's a whole section on variances here. Variances. "The Board of Appeals may authorize upon appeal upon petition with respect to a particular parcel of land and existing building thereon, a variance from the terms of this chapter is set forth."
Yeah.
So, you can grant the variance, but you can't.
Yeah, well, right, and this is why everyone is in conflict because one section says this and another section says that.
But this is within the same section. This is, this is part one to part three. In the same cluster. You can't waive or give variance. You can give variance.
Yeah. So it says, "Such variance shall be granted only in cases where owing to the conditions, the land, topography, all that usual stuff, financial or otherwise." "Such variance shall be granted only in cases where desirable relief may be granted." "The Board of Appeals may impose limitations on both time and use, continuation of the parcel, conditions." Yeah, so it's saying, "All applications shall be made in writing an appropriate form with the board."
Now we're going to read over your sheet right now. Since I'm getting this back, I'm writing on the back of this one. 167...
Yeah, so it does...
The whole chapter basically probably con...
It contradicts itself, yeah. So there's a good contradiction.
I mean, one of the bigger problems we have is that when you start coming in with a cluster of things to fix, they only like to fix so many things at a time. They only have the patience for such, for so many things at a...
Right, because if you fix one section, you may have to fix another section or else it's still conflicting.
So you could argue that this might not conflict. It's basically just saying the special permit, the only thing you're granted a special permit for is the use. Special permit's been granted. And then you grant variances for all the other aspects of it.
So they granted a special permit for the use to have multifamily.
And then it's a separate action to grant the variances.
Variances are granted additionally from that point on. Let me see.
So the special permit, like in the case of a multifamily development, you could grant a special permit for a family on this one 10-acre parcel? And then you would then have to grant variances for a reduction in frontage? Multiple buildings on a single lot?
So the special permit, it says, it's pretty, like you're saying.
Yeah.
That makes a lot of sense.
So it's separate votes on each one of those.
It's not really, it's not contradicting, it's saying, it just says that the special permit shall be applicable only for the use of the property for the purpose specified and doesn't free them from anything else but that one specific. And then, literally on the next page... Is it the next page? Or was it, it's only two pages? Oh, alright.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, so section six, three.
The way I've seen it in the past is that you actually take a separate vote on each one of those variances. Or you could vote on all the variances together if you wanted to and you could deny one and approve five or vice versa. And then it would be incumbent upon the applicant to say, okay, well, I accept these variances that you've granted and I'll redesign it to get rid of this last one that you're not...
We'll make that concern.
And then you have to remember, multifamily development is under density regulations for specific uses. 16712.
Right.
And that's what they're basically going off with that they met all the criteria required in 16712.
Well, the special permit, it's saying, is for only the use.
Right. So, but this is a specific use, multifamily development. So you thought, so you should be able to follow that criteria. If you meet that criteria...
Then you have to conform to the dimensional requirements in 16712.
Well...
Right, because the use is granted.
Right, but density regulations, which in some cases, or what may be argued is that even though it's a specific use and they have density regulations for that, they should still follow 16710.
Which is what?
Which is all of your other requirements. For, you know, 150 feet of frontage, 40,000 square feet for each lot.
Why would you argue that?
That's what some people do.
But under what? For what reason?
The argument is, is that, which we started with, was that a multifamily would fall onto subdivision control and require lots to be created with frontage and et cetera, et cetera.
But if you did that, then you'd have to have a 10-acre lot for each building, right?
I think you're right. Just the way it's worded now. But obviously, we shouldn't endorse that.
I mean, there's, there's literally no way.
You're going to have specific density regulations for a specific use, this being a multifamily. If you don't want that specific and you want to go off of the regular density regulations, then you have to take multifamily completely out.
Which is why I think it should be treated as a whole separate type of development with its own frontage requirements.
There's nothing really specific with that, so it's argued that you have to go back to the regular density regulation.
Well, but currently, the way it's, currently the way it's written, it has its own criteria. And the way...
But not specific.
No, it does, they're pretty specific. It says you need to have so many feet of setback.
In the, in the chart, yes.
No, in the actual 16712, it says you need to have front setback of 75 feet, rear yard is 100 feet and 100 feet between any two buildings. So how would you ever be able to have 100 feet between any two buildings if they were on separate lots? Why would that even matter? If, if this really did apply and your side yard setback was 100 feet, wouldn't it be 200 feet between buildings if each building had to be in its own lot? So this, to me, implies that they're all on the same lot. And you just have to make sure the buildings are 75 feet apart or 100 feet apart.
So there's a lot requirement with things get hung up?
It's not even in this section, the lot requirement is in 167...
16723. What?
It's in 23.
16723. No, but the multifamily implication that "shall locate each building on an individual lot which shall have continuous frontage on a public or private way" is 16723. I don't know if you gave me the wrong one. Yeah, I don't know. A.
16723A?
Oh, wait, why am I...
That can't be right.
It says 16723 directly above it on this, so it's probably wrong.
No, that's the page.
Oh.
Ah.
Sorry.
16723.
Sorry, I was looking at a photocopy. So I'm on D2A.
D, yeah, that's what, what does it say?
Couldn't tell you.
So basically, the two sections of multifamily is in 1677D, specific use regulations.
16710.
There's some information about requirements for multifamily. And then additionally, there is in 16712.
1677D? 71D? Seven one D?
Seven D two.
Is there a number?
Yeah, two.
One sixty seven two seven D.
No, wait, one, one sixty seven. D.
Yeah, but where is the number?
Nope.
I'm trying to find it. It has to start with the number, right?
It's one sixty seven. One sixty seven seven.
One, two, three.
Yeah, but then you go one sixty seven, gotta find D.
But what number? D?
Well, it's a D, it's not a number.
Oh, there's a lot of Ds, A, B, C.
That's what it says.
Which one?
This highlighted is where it says lots.
One sixty seven. One sixty seven. D, specific use regulations.
Yeah.
Number two.
Yeah.
That's the first part of multifamily and then the second part of multifamily is one sixty seven twelve.
I think that's an awful condition. And I think.
So it just seriously really needs to be looked at, flipped back and forth.
What was the point?
A large problem is with anything like this, that you can't make it so that nobody can look at it the wrong way. You can't, like there, there is no perfectly written, that it can't be subverted to mean something else.
I think this is poorly written.
Did I think this section, yeah, is poorly written, but I, I, I think that when, when it comes to. You know, somebody wanting to interpret anything, and that's, that's why it comes, usually comes down to arbitration with these things when they get dug in.
I also don't think it should be written purposefully to create that.
I agree.
Problem.
That's why when it gets convoluted like this stuff, it opens up a lot of lanes for interpretation.
Yep.
Well, the other towns interpreted it too. I kinda looked at Hanson, Bridgewater and all that, like the surrounding towns. They can make, they just combine them for the most part.
Oh yeah.
It's basically multifamily slash subdivision. It's all under one roof.
But subdivisions just creation of the roadway though, right? That's basically what the subdivision control laws, how lots correspond to the roadways. So then what did they do for the multifamily? Density to be able to construct a multifamily development? Was it just one big piece of property?
Yeah, like the weird thing was is like there, they didn't have all like the, the density factors like we have, like there was setbacks, like minimum setbacks from the front, like the front row, like seventy five feet or so from the front.
Right.
But like as far as like a full density requirement, like we require, for example, a multifamily development, ten acres at least of billable area.
Yeah.
And they didn't require that.
It was one acre per unit?
Well, yeah, for the most part, there was, they were saying like they were calling it units rather than us calling it one unit per ten acres or at least a lot. We call it lot, we don't call them units, so.
No, I think we, we do reference units still, yeah.
They say, I thought they said lot.
One acre per unit.
Yeah, no more.
Oh, it does.
Yeah, yeah, and I've seen that in a definition of the table when you do the density, they have a lot area per unit and they just include it in the density table instead of it have it
Right.
its own narrative section.
Right.
I've seen that in the past. It having each building be on its own separate lot. I don't understand what the point of that is. I think that's creating a lot of problems where it doesn't need to.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think there's an issue like the first time I brought it up, I didn't know if it was a legal description or something like that. Is there a way to record it and then have, you know, have the registry accept it and be able to say, okay, this is a lot that I'm buying? So that might be an issue.
I've seen it in condo associations where you have the master parcel, if everybody gets the same address and then it's unit one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight and then you just.
That's without a problem.
Yeah, and you carve up the land with the essentially air rights and the condo development and that's not a problem. It, maybe it's a fire department issue. I don't know if they have any issue.
But I don't know if.
Go hunt twin lakes, they're not called units. Each uh condo has a separate number, an actual address number, same with Latin lane.
So twenty whatever road, twenty two whatever road.
Yeah, three fifty seven twin lakes per head, like they're all.
Yeah, this like, what, how many units are there?
It's gotta be at least two hundred.
There's like. Oh, no, it's even more.
That is it, that is at least two hundred.
There's more than that.
This, this is like five, six, seven, eight.
Is it, there's at least four or five.
Somewhere else, is it?
At least one?
See it.
Well, it's every, it's actually every other number, so.
Cuz you usually can't get a road address unless a road exists, right?
Wow.
So are those.
A road does exist, but it's a private way. The town does not maintain it.
But what constitutes a private way? I don't think there's a definition in here, right?
All it says is that we can't, we can't create private ways.
Someone says in the press, you can't create private ways as well.
Which.
Which, I mean, it's just. No, I don't think we have a definite definition of private way.
Let's see.
No, we don't.
No, yeah.
That's not part of transportation, definitely.
Well, no, cuz we don't allow them, so we didn't really have to define them. It's just.
Yeah, but how do you define it to not be a private way?
Well, it's not, you, you.
If you don't own it, make it a road.
Cuz who assigns, who assigns? Address is the fire department?
Assessors.
The assessors, but does the fire department have to approve the address to make sure it doesn't conflict with another name road and it's confusing?
Well, I think that's what the assessor is supposed to be.
Yeah, I think the assessor can do that.
Some other towns, the fire department um assigns it, but our town, the assessor does.
Better keep him busy.
There's not even a private drive, it's just an address is all they have. We don't know if it's a private drive, we don't know if it's a driveway. Yeah. It could be a driveway.
Far, it could be, as far as I know, it is considered a private way.
It could be a really big common drive.
I think Latin lanes too.
But when you're saying a private way, what do you mean by private way?
It just means that the town doesn't, yeah, we don't follow it. It's an association that handles it.
Right. But private way.
The plowing, the sowing.
Is that something?
But I don't, I also don't know if that prohibits other residents that don't live in the condos, like I,
From trespassing.
I know in Twin Lakes, like they don't let you trick or treat in there if you, you know, so that's.
You don't live in.
Yeah, they don't, they don't let you drive down the road, so that would, I don't know, that's where the private part comes in, where they can actually exclude other town residents from driving down it.
Yeah, so I wouldn't even call it a private way cuz that implies that there's some sort of legal definition of what a private way is, it's just a named driveway, right?
That gives you the ability to prohibit entry, like I, I don't know if we have any other.
Well, it's probably, see, that's why it's one big piece of property that's owned by the condo association and the property extends all the way to fifty eight there.
Oh, thirty, thirty six.
Or thirty six, yeah.
No, it's fifty, oh, twenty nine.
Twin Lakes, Twin Lakes, yeah.
Yes, thirty six.
That's just the only one I know of, so like I, I don't know, if you're saying how do you define private?
Well, I mean, it's no different than like a gated community.
The fact that you can stop people from going down it.
At that point.
That's a big difference. You know what I mean? You can't stop somebody from going down Clyde O'Boazworth for trick or treating.
That's because the, the town maintains the road.
It might not be accepted way. Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, it's not a private way.
It's a public driveway.
It's a public, yes, but I mean, that's.
Well, I guess that's getting back to the definition of the multifamily, having access on a, on a way, on some sort of a way. I don't think it's a way necessarily. I think it's just a driveway within a piece of property, just like the stop a shop entrance isn't a private way. It's just a driveway.
Well, that's a good point, yeah, so do we hold that access to the same standard as a road?
No, we don't.
Regardless of how long or how many people, I mean, I'm sure the fire department's still gonna want their twelve hundred feet in turnaround width and hundred foot radiuses and.
Well, that gets considered as part of the site plan review, right?
Okay. Actually, yeah, yeah, we could apply that without applying our regular road.
Right, cuz we're not gonna make a private drive be as wide as a public right away, or the, the typical roadway would be necessarily.
But what if it ends up like that just because of?
The nature of what they wanna build?
Or requirements for emergency vehicles, like if now all of a sudden you're talking a fifty foot paved thing, is that something we should be looking at? Because now you're talking a serious construction.
Well, to the same point, how do you approve a commercial development? You look at all those aspects of it as part of the site plan review, right? If you got a commercial development set a mile back off the road, never mind, you're never gonna get traffic to it, but you could do it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you're right, and we, we would enforce that, like a driveway, we wouldn't look at the.
And I think that's how these multifamilies should be looked at, instead of having each building on its own lot. If you just get rid of that provision, it seems like it makes all these issues go away. But I guess that shows up a couple of places in here, but.
Yeah, there's a couple of things with that. I don't know, I don't know specifically, but I do know that the minute I said the word driveway when Gordon was here, he was. Ready, ready for that one.
Just saying that it's not a driveway?
Yeah.
Because you can't have a common driveway.
Because you can't have a common driveway.
It would be.
But that's under the subdivision to multiple lots. You can't have a common driveway to, is it to multiple buildings or multiple lots? I think it's multiple lots, the way it's written, right?
Maybe, I think you're onto something there.
Yeah.
We, yeah, we really gotta work on that. We need to get from being a lot and then there's a lot that that kind of cup, yeah.
This, a lot, one little bit.
Yeah, when it's no longer a lot, it's suddenly a little freer.
That covers a lot of there.
Is that a definition? Do we know where that is?
A definition of.
Driveway or common?
Um, I think that's in.
From the beginning, under definitions, one sixty seven three.
Or is it common driveway is there?
There is no definition of driveway.
But it comes up somewhere, right, that you can't have, or like each driveway has to serve the lot that it's on somewhere.
Yeah, you, you can't have a common driveway and you can't um. You can't have, you can't have two retreat lots next to each other.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Retreat driveways, um.
Can't have driveways next to each other, but D.
I know, you can have the lots next to each other.
Also, if you. Remove the lot requirement, then you, everyone will be accessing through the frontage because it will be one lot and then that allows all of those things.
Yeah, if you want, change the frontage amount to be larger. I don't think necessarily it needs to be.
Each.
No, see, I was given the impression that it shouldn't, there is nothing that we have defined, but I don't think that we should require a hundred and fifty.
There is no frontage definition.
Because I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessary.
There's no frontage definition for a.
But to create a parcel, you need to have a hundred fifty feet of frontage.
A single parcel.
Right, right, and if you're gonna build a multifamily development on a single parcel, the parcel needs to have a hundred fifty feet of frontage, otherwise.
No, because you create a parcel without a hundred and fifty feet of frontage.
Which would be a retreat lot or a state lot only requires fifty feet of frontage.
So is the argument then that you don't need any frontage?
Right now, I guess you could probably propose that.
Uh, we were kinda falling, but what we came up with at last meeting was that they wouldn't require the, the hundred and ten for frontage just for um.
So you're looking.
Just to put a number in.
Just, just, well, and just for the size of the road with the uh.
Cuz that's how big a typical road would need to be. So you, you wanna add a frontage requirement and have it be one ten?
Age.
Right. And have it be one ten.
That's fine.
And that, that way.
Yes, you say, lots says this by law is not.
You have enough, even if it is a retreat property.
But to do to subdivision or anything.
If they have the one ten, then you can get back to it. But if you have less, then I, I guess that's, that's the hiccup.
Yeah, that makes sense if you wanna add a frontage requirement, have it be that one ten.
Is there? Is there a lot of parcels, I'm not sure how many there are in this town, but there are a lot of parcels and people cut open, they kept forty feet. I mean, a lot of times, a lot of times, for a long time, that is kind of the number that people went with, it was just common, they kept it cuz it was a driveway and it was a retreat lot in a lot of towns.
Yeah.
So I think if we don't impose something like that, then all of those parcels, you could be looking at subdivisions and multifamilies behind them.
Not subdivisions, just multifamily.
No, subdivisions, well, multi.
Just the multifamily.
Yeah.
Yeah, so to add a frontage requirement, we better define that, yeah, that makes sense to do that.
For the parcels that weren't, you know, that, that were capping cop out.
Yeah, remove the individual lot requirement.
Or even for no other reason than to clarify it and remove the ambiguity.
Because there is not, yeah, yeah, yeah. And in the hundred and ten, I think we've discussed, that's, that's what's safe for the road and I think the one fifty is probably excessive.
And it gives you setbacks to.
Like, I, I, you know. I, I, I don't think you need the same amount of room to build a road as you need to build a house and have a yard and keep you away from other people, like.
That makes. Yeah, and ideally, you'd want sites that are set back a little bit, right, so you want to encourage those lots with less furniture, you have to push into the back a little bit.
So.
Yeah, it makes sense to me.
So we just go start coming up with language and what we wanna switch out.
Okay.
But those, those two things sound good. The idea of just taking, taking a lot of is.
Next, next town meetings next year. Next town meetings next year?
Yes.
And this isn't something we could change in a special, right?
No, we gotta be done by February though, end of February.
That's still next year.
Well, we have to have, yeah, so we would have to add language, whether.
I'm just saying, we gotta be ready a couple of months before the meeting.
Right. No, no, absolutely.
Cuz we need to have the public forum discussion of it, right, with the proposed changes.
So. That's, that's what I'm saying.
Has to be advertised.
February would be, we'd have to have a.
So it's like ten days or five days, like, yeah.
Yeah. Can we, can we reduce the sign section by like eight or nine pages to?
Yeah, like now, but.
Just cut it all together?
So essentially, your homework would be you look at the bylaws, you write up what you think we should require and then we can all get together.
Okay.
You know, as funny as that, Carlos comes back, right, but Gordon doesn't get, doesn't come here, so this discussion takes a while. And then when Gordon comes back, it's gonna be another forty five minutes discussion.
It's gonna be a complete rehash of this discussion.
So do you guys generally agree or what are your thoughts on not having the lot issue?
I think I clarifies in my, I think as long as we have if something to make the, the property lot, like the ten acre requirement, I think if we have something like that.
Yeah.
I think that keeps and the setbacks the same, that keeps those things away from other people, away from, you know, other houses that are already there.
Yeah, you're not gonna take a two acre lot and carve it up into two units, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I think as long as we have that, I think a lot of this stuff is either redundant, conflicting or unnecessary.
Yeah.
So.
I would agree, and I think the one thing to look out for is just completely getting rid of the buildings on a lot requirement because then that would apply to the single family homes right now, so all of a sudden, if we get rid of that requirement across the board, does that create problems down the road for just the traditional AR district and people wanting to build four buildings on a lot? So I think maybe just make it applicable just to the multifamily section, yeah.
No, because you still need.
Just, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, cuz you still need ten acres, you can't just do one.
Yeah, no, but I'm just saying, if you remove the section about you can't build more than one building on a lot altogether, then that would create problems elsewhere.
Oh, yeah. Right, you can't, right, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cool, okay.
Because you could do the, you know, no more than one building on a lot except within multifamily density regulations.
Yeah.
At.
Well, would that, does that section supersede the multifamily designations?
That's why we have to, if, if we have specific regulations for specific uses such as multifamily and we put in criteria,
If you identify, yeah.
this is what you're allowed to do, the other stuff should not come into play.
Right.
That's what.
That's kind of the whole point. That's why you have separate sections.
It should be, that's why we have.
Yeah, it supersedes the basic stuff.
Right.
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 You wouldn't try to hold a multifamily section to the same constraints you'd have for a, for like a four A lot.
Yeah, so when, anywhere we think it should deviate, we should identify each and every little piece and it's allowed to deviate and then everything else should have to conform.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, that's a proper way to do it. Wow, I like your idea, how novel.
Yeah.
Alright. Okay. So everybody's gonna take a crack at it?
Yep, one take a crack in.
Okay.
I'm done.
You cracked it? Any uh?
No, I have to read the book and see where else there's any other issues. I think that's all we got.
I think that's all the business. I make a motion to adjourn?
You cannot.
I cannot make a motion to adjourn.
I can make a motion to adjourn though.
Do you?
What?
What?
Do you?
I said I can make a motion to adjourn. Okay, make a motion to adjourn. I missed what you said specifically.
All those in favor?
I.